Well, they're still small on the ground. He had 20 hours of community service to perform. So he reached out to us and asked if we could help him get those hours by helping people with yard maintenance. So I reached out to the council and myself, and we've come up with a couple of projects for him, but we're short still in the 20 hours. So one reason I do have here tonight is to help get that push on to get the 20 hours. DeNardo Reponey is our guest. He will lead us in the Pleasure Allegiance, and I think maybe at least one other council member can have something to add to what I said.
Yeah, thank you, DeNardo. Thank you, Kara. Mrs. Rich, her husband, recently passed away, and she has cancer. So it really meant a lot for you to do that, and I appreciate it, and I think it's good for the rest of the council and the rest of the city. We appreciate you, young man. Thank you.
DeNardo, would you like to come up? Yes, sir.
Do you want to roll call now? Mayor?
Here.
First ward?
Yep.
Second ward?
Here.
Third ward?
Here.
Fourth ward?
Here.
Fifth ward? Sixth ward?
Here.
All right, Mayor.
Before we go into the comment period on the agenda items, I'm going to make a note of a couple of things. Number 10 and number 11, I need to remove those. Those are actually appointments that have to be made by those commissions, one by the planning commission, one by the zoning board. I don't have the authority to make those appointments. I'll speak really quickly to the public hearings, because it was asked once before that we were advertising for public hearings, and people really weren't familiar with what they were. These actually came out of the Finance Auto Budget Committee meeting last Wednesday to do some work out. The number two, the West Broadway Parking Improvement District, that hasn't been updated since 1994, so we're going to take a look at that one. Number three, C1 Canal View Off-Street Parking Improvement District, that hasn't been updated since 2014. And the collection piece for disposal of prohibited waste, we're going to take a look at updating that as well. So we'll be advertising for public hearings for those tonight. It will be occurring our next meeting on June 4th. On number six, I do want to make note that Steve Abraham will be ending his service on the Civil Service Commission. Steve has served the city of Fulton since 1996. I will make a note of that so that everybody knows that, and we do thank Steve for his time on the Civil Service Commission. All right, with that being said, I guess I can open it up to anybody who might have a comment on any of the agenda items.
Tom Grabber, 57 South Pollar.
I know there's some jokes. Am I okay with this? I don't have to have a lot? Good evening, Mayor and Council. Wanted to give you an update on our three courts, our project behind the Warhammer that we're very excited about, the community's very excited about. First, just wanted to thank Mayor and the council for your support and partnership through this journey that we've gone through over the last couple of years to be compliant, to fundraise, and to meet the mission of our community, providing as much free programming that we can for our kids and adults. These are basketball courts by design, but there's going to be pickleball opportunities for guys in our age group here. So we're going to be sure that this is inclusive to our community. We're really, really excited. Obviously, we wish these would have been done, but we're going to do this thing right. And as I said, we value the partnership that we have with the city of Fulton, and we could have put these anywhere, and they're right where they should be. And we're thankful, thankful for that. So first, if anybody's been over there, the asphalt is done, so right now there's a 30-day curing period that goes on. During that time, there'll be fencing that comes in, basketball hoops that go from six feet to 10 feet, so kids of all ages can participate. There's going to be a windscreen, you know, to deal with the wind off the lake, but I've been assured that it's not going to encumber the view of our lake. We talked about that when we were doing it. So those items, the fencing, the basketball hoops, and the windscreen will be in during that curing period, and they told me they can work on those items while the asphalt is curing. So on or about June 17th, the surfacing, that final surfacing and the striping, you know, we're going to stripe it as a basketball court, end with pickleball lines, buying portable pickleball mats that can come and go. That will be started, I think, right around June 17th, and when that's completed, there is another shorter, not a 30-day, a shorter curing period that goes on. And with any luck, by July 1st or early July, we will be there. We'll have kids there having some fun events, adults playing pickleball in the morning. And we've been trying to get this message out, Jerry Marbido and Alyssa Viscom and myself, is, well, they're basketball courts. We want these to be welcoming to our entire community. So, you know, we envision that this time next year, as our May Day Parade is coming up, there'll be events going on there that may include basketball, that may include, you know, local dance companies that's going to do an event there, or a show, some kind of entertainment. This is for our community, and we hope that it's never docked. We hope that there's activity going on all the time. So we're really excited, and again, thank you. The last few months, we've gotten so much done that was being held up on a backboard for whatever reason, good reason, and so we're really excited. When the ribbon cutting happens, we hope you're all there. We've got a lot to celebrate with this, and I think that that footprint is going to look significantly different in four or five years after we finish this project, and we are going to finish it. Do I take questions, Mayor? Because I'd be happy to.
No. No, just the agenda item, the number nine?
Yep.
So just to be speaking then on the signage just for a moment?
Yeah, so...
The end of agreement?
So we've raised a significant amount of money. The Bayhun for the first up, and Schindman Foundation, and our community has really stepped up, and, you know, this project is well over 200K. That price went up after COVID, but this thing's going to be here forever. It's a great investment. Once that initial invoice is paid, there's going to be ongoing expenses, operating costs. We want these things to be taken care of. We want them to be supervised. If I'm going to continue to use the word inclusive, we want to make sure parents in our community feel comfortable dropping their son or daughter off and knowing that not only they're going to have fun, but it's going to be safe and secure. You know, we're partnering with the Swoop County Youth Works, the Youth Bureau, Miracor. But the signage is going to help us raise revenue that will be required to keep these things self-sufficient over the years. I think it's a great opportunity for local businesses, because I don't know that there is a building in our community that gets more traffic than the Fulton Memorial. If you want to spend a Saturday with me in the winter, you know, see everybody you want to see in Fulton, because there's literally, you know, we don't have a toll taker, but, you know, there's 800 to 1,200 people that want in and out of the Fulton Memorial just on Saturdays. Our NEI program had the largest numbers that we've ever had. That's a reflection of the fact that the city provides great programming for our youth. So businesses that choose to partner with us and, you know, put a sign up, that's going to be good for them, because there's going to be eyes on their business year round, whether it's sitting outside during the summer and spring months when we're out there playing, or inside. I think it's a win-win, and it allows us to be as self-sufficient as we can to maintain the viability of, after the courts are built, the use we want our community to have without continuing to go to other fundraisers and ask for dollars. So we're hoping you consider that. We think that once this thing gets rolling this summer, there's, we're anxious to see the activity that goes on there. I just think it's going to be, we can turn that into a destination spot for kids and families in our community. I just had a conversation today with Jerry Shrimp where he wanted for his men's league. He's got a great men's league program at the Warhammer that goes back years. Tonight, he can't have men's league because we're voting for a school board vote, right? Good reason not to have the Warhammer open. Next year at this time, we'll be playing those men's league games on our outdoor court. So the opportunities are endless. We think once we get rolling here, people are going to make some suggestions that we haven't thought of. So we hope you consider that proposal that we put forward to the mayor so that we have operating funds going forward to do everything we want to do for the youth and for the community as a whole.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Shaw, I just want to say thank you to you and your committee. You came to us back during Ron Woodhurst's administration to start this dream. Kathy, I know, was there, myself. She was green at the time.
Yep.
And that's when it started, and it's evolved over the last few years, and I want to thank you especially for all you've done to make this happen. It's going to be great for our community, great for our kids. Thank you to you and your committee for everything.
Frank Castilla, 372 South 7th Street.
Good evening. I'm going to take these, not in order, because the first one popped right out at me. The bond resolution. You make a general statement, but what are the improvements that are being made? I mean, if we're going to have a public hearing on it, people have to know what they're going to come and speak on about, if they're in favor of it, and any other suggestions?
Did the last council have a public hearing on this one? Did the last council have a public hearing? On the agreement with the streetlights? See, this was all built before I got here.
The reason I'm asking the question is, it came to my mind, you know, lighting, and at the last, at the budget hearing, I brought up the fact that during Dennis Merlino's stint on the common council, he had gotten with the mayor, and they had gotten authority from, I guess it's NIMO or National Grid, to change out the light bulb, to change out all the streetlights, basically. Okay? And that was supposed to save us thousands and thousands of dollars.
$193,000 annually.
Yeah, and right now it's costing us some amount of money, and I'm just wondering, is this what we're going to do again?
The cost is going to be paid for by the savings, is the English phrase?
Yep.
The cost is going to be paid for by the savings.
Yeah, we still have to work with a few years of the time to allow for it. We're going to do all the washing for it.
All right, so we're going to put more lights up?
Yeah.
That's what we're doing? Okay. And then, you know, that's what I was looking for as an answer. What are we going to do? We're going to put up more lights?
Yeah, there's a splash park in here, there's softball field lights. Several different projects.
What is it?
EPW Warhammer, the chillers, and the ice rink, all of this stuff is in here.
It's all in there?
Yep.
Now, the next question is part of that, is because we're going to bond for this, and you're going to pay for it with the savings out of using the lights. But what is our bond debt right now? Do we have any idea? We could have that on the website as to what this public hearing is going to be so that people will know what our bond debt is?
What our rating is, is that the question?
No, not our rating. What is our bond debt?
Offhand, I don't have anything with it.
Okay.
Yep.
As long as we can put it on the website so that when you come to the public hearing, we'll know what we're talking about. Then also, the concern, of course, and idiot, but could I have the bond payment that we make? Have you ever, because that's part of the budget, and it's part of the cost, and it's all, it adds up. And if we don't ask the questions now, when all of a sudden it comes, what's this, why are we paying so much on bond debt? People are going to ask, okay?
Yep.
And the other thing is just, if it figures off that, if we get approved on this bond, how much will it increase our bond payments? Because I know the bond payments are yearly, and they're stretched out over a lengthy period of time, and I know this so that we don't have to pay for it all at once, but it's still a bill that we're going to be creating, and we have to make sure that what is going to increase is by. Second item that I want to speak on is fee increases. What are the fees now, and what are they going to go to? If there's going to be a public hearing, people need to know what we're going to be paying for.
Oh, on the garbage?
Yes.
On the garbage disposal?
Right.
Raising it from, what, seven? What are we talking about?
I'm sorry, for a second?
He's asking about the fee increases?
Yes.
On the public hearings?
What are the fees right now?
So if you put a couch out or whatever, whatever, right now...
We're actually looking at raising the fines more so than the fees.
We're raising the fine, because if you just sort of shut me out of the street, you didn't follow this, obviously, you didn't pay.
Like, it's $12 for a couch right now, for example. So what the committee looked at was not raising the fee. They were looking, they look more towards raising the fine. The fine right now is $20, and it gets one onto your water bill if you get fined?
All right, so it's not a fee, because it's listed as a fee in the public hearing?
In the schedule and the code, it's listed as a fee, so that's why we call it a fee, because that's how it's listed in our code.
All right, so it's $12 now, and what are you going to take it to? Take it to 15?
It's $20, and it's going to be $15. Well, this one is the...
So if I called to have a couch picked up, though, what does it cost right now?
$12.
$12?
It'd be $15 if approved.
And each, if I had two cushions, I know, $12 for each one. I ran into it already once. Okay.
Yeah, I think the committee thought that, I can't speak for the committee, but I think the consensus might have been to be a little more heavier on the fine to hopefully provide for more compliance. I think that's part of the goal.
Yeah, I understand. I mean, I was just, when it's listed as a fee, I'm thinking, okay, if I want to have a collection, a, let's say, a couch that I want to put out and I want to have it picked up, I'm looking, is that going to increase? If that's not going to increase, then I'm not, you know, I'm worried about it. If I come down to City Hall and I ask to have my couch picked up, and I put it out on a Sunday night, be picked up Monday, it's still only going to cost me $12. It's not going to $15, correct?
Yeah, I think we're leaving that at $12. I think the proposal was to leave it at $12 and to raise the key fines.
No, I actually made a new decision.
$15?
All right, so... I'm just saying, a fee is nothing more than a tax, okay? You're adding more taxes to the people. They got to pick something up. Now, instead of $12, it's going to $15, and I just want to make sure that's in the paper or on the website so that people know that, okay? Because to me, fees are what, that's why I kept asking, kept going, because over here, there's a different conversation going on over here, and I knew that it was probably, you're going to increase it off, and that's not right.
Well, the public will get this happen, say, in a public hearing?
Yeah.
What if they don't, they don't know what it's going to be about, and they're getting the answers?
Just now, at first, it was going to be, it was a fine, and now it went to a fee, so I'm asking the questions.
Well, there's both. There's a fee for picking and paying, and then if you don't pay, there's a fine. There are two different, it's two separate.
Yeah, but you're putting them both at $15.
No.
You just said you were.
If you call Debbie's office and you go down and try to pay for her mattress tomorrow with $12, if we go to your house and we didn't pay or we pick it up, it's $20. We want to raise you paying her $15 and us picking it up without you paying.
I have no comment on the fine.
So being a fine are different.
I know there's two different things, but when I asked again, you said, no, both going to $15. So it'd be nice to know at the time of the public hearing what it's going to be. On number three, the Canal View Off-Street Parking Improvement District. What is the district right now? What is it being amended from? And two.
The district is self-sufficient now. The taxes, essentially, is looking to be amended. Right now, it's up $40,000, and the council is looking to raise it. Hasn't been updated since 2014.
Okay, I, you know, just looking for an explanation. You're proving that all the time. I want to know what I'm going to, you know, if I want to speak on it or not speak on it.
Yep.
Okay, and the same thing with West Broadway Parking District?
Correct. That one hasn't been raised since 1994.
And that's, that again is a tax thing, correct?
Yep.
Okay, that's all I have. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Would anyone else like to speak on the agenda items? We'll move on to the agenda then. Item number one is resolved to approve the minutes from the May 7th, 2024, County Council meeting. Resolved that the minutes from the May 7th, 2024, County Council meeting are hereby approved and placed on file. May I have a motion?
I'll move it.
Set up? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carried. Item number two is resolved to authorize the City Clerk Chamberlain to advertise for a public hearing relative to amending the City Charter Section C263A entitled West Broadway Parking Improvement District. Resolved that the City Clerk Chamberlain is hereby authorized and directed to advertise for a public hearing to be held on Tuesday, June 4th, 2024, in the County Council chambers of the municipal building located at 141 South 1st Street, Fulton, New York, relative to amending the City Charter Section C263A entitled West Broadway Parking Improvement District. May I have a motion?
I'll move it.
Counselor Avery, Counselor?
Chapman.
Chapman. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carried. Item number three is resolved to authorize the City Clerk Chamberlain to advertise for a public hearing relative to amending the City Charter Section C263 entitled Canal View Off-Street Parking Improvement District. Resolved that the City Clerk Chamberlain is hereby authorized and directed to advertise for a public hearing to be held on Tuesday, June 4th, 2024, in the County Council chambers of the municipal building located at 141 South 1st Street, Fulton, New York, relative to amending the City Charter Section C263 entitled Canal View Off-Street Parking Improvement District. May I have a motion?
I'll move it.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carried. Item number four, resolved to authorize the City Clerk Chamberlain to advertise for a public hearing relative to amending the fees for the collection and disposal of prohibited waste materials. Resolved that the City Clerk Chamberlain is hereby authorized and directed to advertise for a public hearing to be held on Tuesday, June 4th, 2024, in the County Council chambers of the municipal building located at 141 South 1st Street, Fulton, New York, relative to amending the fees for the collection and disposal of prohibited waste materials. May I have a motion? Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carried.
I just want to thank Councilors Patrick Habb and Avery, who serve on the Finance and Project Committee for moving these quickly to the agenda so we can get the public hearing. Thank you.
Council President, before we go to number five, may we have discussions with you on this item?
On number five?
Yes.
Yep, sure.
So remember last year, I asked Michael the total for the splash park and where it was going? Because I thought that shoelaces, upwards $200, something thousand dollars, still be larger. I felt that there were more important issues in the city that we could have addressed with this money.
Right.
So if we don't have the amount of this budget tonight that's going to be included in the bond, I'd like to table it so we can find out. I just don't want to approve something for a public hearing, you know, knowing the numbers.
So we have a table. Motion to table. Is that what you're going to do?
Yes.
All right, we have a motion to table. Number second?
Second.
Take a roll call vote on tabling this matter. First ward?
Yes.
Second ward?
No.
Third ward?
Yes.
Fourth ward?
Yes.
Fifth ward? Sixth ward?
Yes.
This matter is tabled. Go on to item number six, notation to appoint Elizabeth Connors to the Civil Service Commission. Notation that Elizabeth Connors at 34 North Pollar Drive, Fulton, New York, is hereby appointed to the Civil Service Commission for a six-year term effective June 1st, 2024, and expiring May 31st, 2030. It's hereby entered into the minutes of this meeting of May 21st, 2024, as a matter of record. Item number seven, a notation that the city assessor filed a statement of disclosure with the City Clerk Chamberlain. Notation that a statement of disclosure had been filed with the City Clerk Chamberlain for 2024 by Mary Beth Johnson, city assessor. Number eight is a notation that the single audit report was filed with the City Clerk Chamberlain. Notation that the single audit report for the year ending December 31st, 2021, was filed with the City Clerk Chamberlain on May 2nd, 2024. Number nine is resolved to authorize the mayor to sign an agreement with Fulton Community Basketball Corporation. Resolved that the mayor be authorized to sign an agreement with Fulton Community Basketball Incorporated for signage surrounding the dream courts and inside Fulton Moore Memorial. May I have a motion?
I'll move it.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carried. As the mayor said previously, items 10 and 11 have been removed from the agenda and have been referred to the Warhammer Planning Commission and the zoning board to make those appointments per city code. We will now move on to the open comment period. Martin Monti, Meadowbrook Apartments.
Good evening. Martin Monti, 4012 Meadowbrook Circle. I'm speaking to invite the community to a complimentary cookout at the Reformed Presbyterian Church down the street, which is across the street from the post office. We'll be hosting the cookout on June 8th, which is the first citywide yard sale of the summer, I believe, so between 12 and 2. If you're in the area and you're hungry and you want a hot dog or a hamburger, please stop on by. Thanks. Thank you.
Frank Castilla, 372 South 7th.
Good evening, Kate. First and foremost, Mayor and Councilpeople, today was a very important vote for not only the city of Fulton, the city of Fulton, but the entire Fulton School District. When I was informed that over half of the parking at the Womack Marlin was being blocked, the answer I received was there was ample parking. What I asked is, would you say that this is a mayoral race today? Would you accept that half the parking blocked off, that there's ample parking? No, that wouldn't be an answer. I think not. You would have cried voter suppression. It's too late now, but let's not let it happen again. I mean, you know, the, they could have waited until Wednesday to just set up of the rides over the park. This vote is very important to people of Fulton and the school district. And people just go, they can't park, they'll leave. I mean, there is another issue that I'll take up with the school board, but there were people that were told to live on the west side of the city, that if they lived in a certain area to the other side of one seventy-six, they were told they couldn't vote on the west side. They had to come over to the east side to vote. People showed up to vote, they were told they can't vote on the west side. They had to come to the east side. Now, all the literature that we received said the river was the boundary, west side of the river voted, the one on the east side of the river voted, that here at City Hall. Okay, and that wasn't the case when people went. That I'll take up with the school board. But, you know, it's very, very sad. We got to make sure that in the future, when we've got places there for voting, that we make sure that we have ample parking and if not, that we ask people to move because there was parking moved. The last call I received was I couldn't park Frank because all the parking spaces were taken up by the worker bees. So, you know, just, that's what I received. That's all I have for tonight. Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else that'd like to speak? Open comment session? Now we'll move on.
Yeah, we have a couple of councilmen. So I'm going to start with Councilor Patrick, beginning.
Okay, well, couple of things. First off, I'd like to pay respects to a longtime city employee that passed away over the weekend, Harold Wood. He was a longtime employee with the DPW and I just want to pay my respects to everybody, pay their respects to him. They knew him as Woody, like another Woody, but he was a good employee, very well when I worked at the drive, so just want to give my respects to Taylor's family. Number two. Grass is a big item this year, it seems. Grass being cut and mowed in the roads. It seems like the form I put out there, or Councilor Avery, and any of us put out there, it seems like it's done more in spite. It seems to be a major problem this year and I'm not sure whether the grass is just so thick that, but I just don't understand why people can't turn the law the other way. I mean, it seems to be a major problem. I got a picture tonight from someone that sent me down to Persian Drive. It looks like there's more grass in the road than it was on the lawn. I mean, they had to start halfway through the lawn and just blow it as they went towards the road. This has got to stop. This is a hazard. Between grass being mowed in the road, between yard waste being placed in the road, I don't know how many streets I've gone up and there's branches, there's sticks and piles of leaves, you know, and if you're not fully aware, if you're not looking or it's not really light out, you're going to get a stick or a branch going down the side of your driveway. That's a major problem. We need to stop. It's got to be stopped. My plan on addressing with code enforcement and legislators, my plan on addressing this grass issue, it is against the law in the United States. Unfortunately, we probably won't have the police going around issuing tickets because they have enough house to do. But what we would like to do is, we would like to adopt that law and put it on code enforcement and we go from there, we go up with a fire structure and people start getting going, it's going to have to happen. I mean, it seems worse this year than I've ever seen it and I'm not sure why, but, you know, I'm sure everybody sees it, no matter what neighborhoods they live on, seems everybody's doing it this year, but, you know, it's a major issue. So I want to, I just want to address that. Big people aware, we are, we are working at it. You know, we will be, as a council, putting something together and it will be, we will be coming down on people that are doing it. I mean, it's got to stop. So thank you, that's all I have.
Uh, Councilor Cav?
I'm good. Thanks for everybody showing up tonight. Times has been really good here, the council meetings. It's always good to see everybody come in and see what's happening with the city, so keep up the good work. Thanks.
Councilor Avery?
I'm all set, thank you.
Councilor Chapman?
Thanks again to the house. Chan.
Councilor Vernon?
I'm all set.
So you're nicely tanned? Been on vacation? Councilor Chapman?
Uh, yeah, I just want to, I just want to thank everybody for coming and this weekend, I want everybody to enjoy themselves with their family and friends. Because you never know from one day to the next, who's going to be here with, have a good weekend and happy Memorial Day. Thank you.
Yes, a pretty big weekend. Hope everybody is out and enjoys it. Council has to move into executive session. There's nothing else from the public. We, I expect we will have one item to vote on, on the items that we'll discuss it, so. So just so you know, we can't actually close the meeting till after the executive sessions and we will have one item to vote on.
May I have a motion? Resolved to enter the executive session to discuss a personnel matter, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Both? Abstentions? Now enter into executive session. Resolved to re-convince from executive session, may I have a motion?
I may a motion.
Got Councilor Chapman and Councilor Avery reciting. All in favor?
Aye.
Both? Abstentions? Second session is closed at this point right now? We re-convince. We're now going to resolve to add two resolutions to the agenda for a vote on a personnel matter. May I have a motion to add the two items, which are appointment for bureau chief, code enforcement, and the signage of the contract agreement for the code enforcement bureau chief?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Both? Abstentions? Motion carried. That first agenda item resolved at the appointment to Maggie Smith of fifty-nine North Fourth Street, Fulton, New York, as code enforcement bureau chief is hereby approved. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Roll call vote, first ward?
Yes.
Second ward?
Yes.
Third ward?
Yes.
Fourth ward?
Yes.
Fifth ward? Sixth ward?
Yes.
All in favor, motion carried. Second agenda item resolved that the mayor has authorized to sign the contract agreement for Maggie Smith, code enforcement bureau chief. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carried. Now, we need to resolve to enter into an executive session to discuss another personnel matter. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Now enter into executive session.